You're on the record.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Today's Tuesday, February 25th, and the time is 9:00 a.m. The Board of Ada County Commissioners is in session for their open business meeting. We have all three Commissioners with us in the room today. We also have a lot of folks with us in the audience. We're not going to ask you to state your name today, but make sure that you do sign up in the back before you leave if you haven't done so already. All right? And then we will at the table. Let's go ahead and at the table, though, and we'll start with you, Trent.
Trent Triple, Clerk's Office.
Tim Klein, Treasurer's Office.
Bob McQuaid, Assessor.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Alyssa Arlington, Procurement.
Great, welcome, everyone. Any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, there are not.
All right, then it is with really great pleasure that we are going to start with a special recognition. This is the Best in Class Award. It's a presentation for our healthcare cost control, and we love to hear those words, "healthcare cost control." And I think we have Gallagher. Josh from Gallagher, come on up, and it sounds like you guys have something to read into the record for us. You can go ahead and take a seat over there. And then Cassie, if you can pull up a chair, or that's fine.
I'm able to, if you want.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Well, my name is Josh Sears. I am a benefits consultant for Gallagher Benefit Services here in Boise, and we have the great pleasure to have Ada County as one of our clients. And I've got a recognition here for Best in Class in Healthcare Cost Control for the Employee Health Plan that Ada County sponsors. So, well, you might ask, "Well, that's all great, but how do we come up with that?" Well, Gallagher conducts a survey of over 4,000 employers across the country, and we divide them up according to size. And for large employers, that is employers with 1,000 or more employees, we only give out the Best in Class to the top quartile. In other words, the top 25% of those who are avoiding cost increases and, in fact, controlling costs. If I may read something briefly.
Absolutely.
Congratulations on ranking amongst the Best in Class for Healthcare Cost Control. You're only one of 108 larger organizations who completed the survey. Just 26% are qualified for the ranking. You possess the key attributes of Best in Class organizations defined by areas of excellence in reducing employee healthcare cost shifting and targeting waste in benefit spending. In other words, you're not putting more cost on employees to reduce the county's cost, which is always excellent, and offering competitive benefits with limited integration of well-being elements. In other words, you're taking care of your folks, giving them lots of opportunities to take care of themselves, and by doing that and cutting out the waste, you are controlling healthcare costs. So, congratulations. Well done, and I will stand for any questions and happy to present this to you, Madam Chair, if I could.
Thank you, Josh. And if you could just hold off for a second.
Absolutely.
We'll have you go up here. We'll take a picture with Cassie. But I'd like, Cassie, do you have a few words to say? Your team has worked really hard, I know, on this.
Yes, thank you. This is actually the third year that Ada County has been presented this award. There is a lot of time and effort that goes into this. We have a five-board healthcare trust that spends hours and meets regularly to really decide what's best for the employees and how can we shape the healthcare to attract, retain our employees. And the board has always been very supportive of our recommendations, both on how we allocate costs as well as the benefits that we offer our employees. We do have three people or four people on our benefits team that this is what they do every day, is help our employees to make sure that not only that these are offered, but that employees understand what is out there and they can utilize it so that they understand the value that it gives them. So, appreciate the benefits team. They do this every single day and like them to be included in the picture as well, if that's appropriate.
Absolutely. Can you tell us who's on the healthcare trust, the five members that serve, so we can acknowledge them as well?
Yes. We have Katie Reed from the Clerk's Office. We have Josh Smith from IT. Travis Ruby is the Chair. He's from the Sheriff's Office. Rachel Burkholder from Juvenile Court Services, and Peter Ahern from EMS.
Great memory. Appreciate the service.
We meet enough. I can just visualize them around the table.
Thank you so much, you as well, Cassie, for your hard work on this. I know that you lead that team, and we're very appreciative. Any other comments from Commissioners?
I just will firsthand how great a job your team has done in this, and the award is well-deserved. It's not surprising that you've gotten it three years in a row. I'm just honored to work with you and grateful for your contribution.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? None? Excuse me, we'll go ahead and go off the record, and we'll have all the folks up here, and we'll take a picture of the award. Thank you.
That's fine.
You can squeeze just a little bit. I can get everybody in there.
Come on in. Sideways.
All right, smile.
Doing my employee wellness. I don't fit in here.
No close eyes. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Let's go ahead and get back on the record.
You are on the record.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a Volunteer Board Resolution Number Two. This is a resolution setting forth authority of a program manager and client coordinator. Anyone here to testify on this or to offer any comments on this? Anyone on the board level?
Offer some comments. For those who aren't aware, this is sort of an unsung but critically important role that we have here. We sit as the Board of Community Guardian, which is for folks who don't have family members or friends who can step in to serve in a guardian position for them. And I just want to commend the Clerk's Office and specifically Marika for her work. I recently ran into Judge Beeter, who handles the majority of these cases, and he's just astounded at how much progress that she has made in terms of improving this program. So, it is a huge service to our community and want to thank you all for your work on that. And with that, I would move to approve the Board of Community Guardian Resolution Number Two, as listed on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Guys have it. Motion carries. All right, so we can start with procurement. And we have Bob Perkins with us here. The first one is Final Ranking and Award Recommendation RFP 20020. I believe this was tabled.
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioners, today before you, we have RFP 20020, the Ada County Landfill Daily Construction Operations. And the evaluation team has met and reviewed the proposal and has a recommendation for your consideration.
Go ahead, read it.
Okay. Dear Members of the Board, the sole proposal submitted by Republic Services for RFP 20020, Ada County Landfill Daily Construction Operations, came in over budget. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to reject the proposal as submitted. Sincerely, Bob Perkins, CPPO, CPBB, Procurement Manager, Ada County Procurement.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the Board?
No, I think it sounds like maybe we are back to the drawing board if we're over budget. So, we will have that conversation about how to proceed going forward.
I believe it was significantly over budget. So, yeah, go back to the drawing board. Okay, motion on that?
Madam Chair, let me see the letter here real quick. I move to reject the final recommendation on our, excuse me, I move to accept the recommendation to reject the proposal submitted for RFP 20020, Ada County Landfill Daily Construction Operations.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Guys have it. Motion carries. All right, Bob, next up, we have a protest from Target Specialty Products.
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioners, as you're aware, last week we received a protest for bid 20024 for the Ada County Mosquito Abatement Chemicals from Target Specialty Products. The basis of their protest was the fact that they included sales tax into their bid when the other bidders did not. Ada County is generally exempt from Idaho State Sales Tax, and so they inadvertently put it in when they probably shouldn't have.
And I'll just note that on our bid 20024, the Board did review the instruction to bidders and in the scope in Section One, it says, "Bidders take care to include all taxes, assessment fees, costs, delivery, freight, offload, incidental costs." Also, on the following page, in four, it says, "Taxes. Bidders shall include in their bids all applicable taxes which are levied, et cetera." And then on nine, again, it states that the seller shall comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws to assume responsibility for payment of all sales taxes and inspection fees. So, we've listed it three times in there. So, it's unfortunate that they did not either read it, I guess, or understand it.
What I'd like to do is reach out to Target Specialties and kind of help them out for future bids, so they'll know how to bid appropriately.
That'd be great. Okay, if that'll take a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair. And this is quite a motion, if you can see from here. "I move to deny the protest received from Target Specialty Products regarding the mosquito abatement chemicals, Altocid and Xenabex products that are subject to agency pricing. Objecting to the proposed award is not going to the bidder that correctly included applicable taxes. Target's bid included taxes over and above the agency pricing. However, taxes are not applicable to the county, making Target's bid higher than the proposed bidders identified in the notices of award."
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. All right, Bob, you're up next again, award bid number 20024.
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioners, we have six awards for you this morning, and I'd like to start with the first set of awards from Adapco.
Okay. Dear Members of the Board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid 20024 to Adapco LLC as the lowest responsive bidder for the following products and amounts. Permalone 3030 is a cost of $56, ULV Flush at $17, Pursuit 4-4 ULV at $1835, Pursuit 30-30 ULV at $74.55, Aqua Pursuit ULV at $110, Delta Guard at $187.56. Sincerely, Bob Perkins, CPPO, CPBB.
And we're going to need to take up a motion on each of these separately, so let's go ahead and make a motion on this one. Diana?
Sure, I will get started. I need to do each of them separately, is that correct? Or do you have separate letters for each?
Separate letters.
Okay, so I'll do the Adapco. Okay. All right, Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendations of the Evaluation Committee and award bid 20024, Ada County Mosquito Abatement Chemicals, to Adapco in the amounts of, do I need to read all of these? No. Okay, very good. Okay, so just to Adapco. All right?
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Second one?
All right, our next one up is for your consideration.
Okay. We take mosquito abatement seriously around here, folks. Dear Members of the Board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid 20024 to Clark Mosquito Control Products, Inc., as the lowest responsive bidder for the following products and amounts. Product Mosquito Master 412 at a cost of $69.10. Sincerely, Bob Perkins, CPPO, CPBB.
All right. Okay, take a motion.
Very good. Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award bid 20024, Ada County Mosquito Abatement Chemicals, to Clark Mosquito Control Products, for product Mosquito Master 412 in the amount of $69.10.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. All right, third one?
All right, there you go.
Just looking at him, getting you all your stuff.
All right, Josh is leaving. He's had enough.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Dear Members of the Board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid 20024 to Target Specialty Products as the lowest responsive bidder for the following products and amounts. Aqua Reslin at $132.50, Perm-X 4-4 at $18.82, Aqua Perm-X 30-30 at $104.90, Pi Purnell 525 Oil Concentrate at $201.44, Evergreen ULV 5-25 Ground at $186.41, and Maverick Perimeter at $32.50. Sincerely, Bob Perkins, CPPO, CPBB. And I will move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award bid 20024, Ada County Mosquito Abatement Chemicals, to Target Specialty Products.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. All right, fourth one?
Number four.
All right. Wish I had studied more in chemistry class. After reviewing the bid submitted, it is the recommendation of the Evaluation Group to award the contract for bid 20024, Univar Solutions, as the lowest responsive bidder for the following products and amounts. Dibram, $205.96, Summit BTI Burkets, $82.25, Aqua Xenabex E20 at $310.37, Xenabex E20, $310.37, Xenabex E4 RTU, $85.39, Master Line Control 4-4, $18.39, Control 30-30, $55.55, Perm-X 30-30, $61.60, Perm-X 31-66, $69.84, Sumalrav 0.5G, $33.80, Mineral Oil to Mix ULV, $6.30. Sincerely, Bob Perkins, CPPO, CPBB. Okay, I will make the motion to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award bid 20024, Ada County Mosquito Abatement Chemicals, to Univar Solutions.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Number five?
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioners, our final two recommendations are actually tie bids, and so this is a recommendation for tie bids.
Okay. Dear Members of the Board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is the recommendation of the Evaluation Group to award the tied bid line items for bid 20024 to Adapco LLC as the lowest responsive bidder for the following chemical amount. Fifenon EW at $51.27. Sincerely, Bob Perkins, CPPO, CPBB. And I will move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award bid 20024, Ada County Mosquito Abatement Chemicals, to Adapco LLC.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. All right, our final recommendation.
All right. Dear Members of the Board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is the recommendation of the Evaluation Group to award the tied bid line items for bid 20024 to Adapco LLC as the lowest responsive bidder for the following chemicals and amounts. Altocid Burkets at $476, Altocid Pellets $25.55, Altocid Pellet WSP $688, Altocid XR Burkets $752.40, Altocid XR-G $8.95, Altocid P-35 $17.59, Altocid SBG II $3.21, and Duplex D. And I will move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award bid 20024, Ada County Mosquito Abatement Chemicals, to Univar Solutions.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. All right, you did it right out. Yes?
Go get them.
Go get them, yeah.
Go get them. Yep, you got everything you need for all those mosquitoes. All right.
A conditional offer of employment for Director of Operations and Resources. Any further discussion on that or any discussion on that? We'll need to take up a motion to direct staff to go forth with a conditional offer. Okay?
Madam Chair, brief discussion. Wanted to thank HR and Steve Rutherford for screening the applicants and putting together the finalists. And the Board, speaking for the Board, we're all excited about the candidate that we selected, and we believe he'll be an exceptional asset to Ada County.
Agreed.
Very much agree, and I'll be prepared to second a motion, but would just, again, want to thank Cassie and her team for the work that they did, certainly Steve Rutherford as well. Looking forward to working with this person. I think they're going to be a real asset to the team.
A shout-out to Jessica. Thank you for your work.
Okay. Would you like to add anything, Madam Chair?
Why? No.
Okay, here goes the motion. Madam Chair, I move to direct staff to make a conditional offer of employment for Director of Operations and Resources to Jess Oswell.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Excited, yay. All right, next up, licenses. And I'll need a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including five catering permits, one new license, one license transfer, and nine license renewals, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, Clerk's Office. All right, good morning, Trent.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Clerk's Office this morning?
Phil is at the legislature monitoring property tax bill that is being debated and possibly voted on today. We started the early voting for elections yesterday for the presidential preference. We're in the throes of HRIS Migration Implementation Contract and working well with Sierra Cedar and HR and IT here in the county, which has been a good experience so far, and we're looking forward to getting that up and running beginning of next year. And then we're also in the throes of developing budgets, as you are all well aware.
Yes, we are.
Sounds like a lot of throes.
Mm-hmm.
Right, anything, any questions?
No, ma'am. Thank you, Trent.
Thank you, Trent. Can't believe it's that time already, voting, early voting. Get out there. All right, Claims Journal, I need a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated February 21st, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, personal action forms.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve the personal action forms as listed on the agenda, including six introductory pay period completions and eight lease with pay, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, the Assessor's Office. Good morning, Mr. McQuaid.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I will report this morning on our maximum wait time in motor vehicles. Our average wait times are about five minutes, and those are pretty consistent, so we feel good about that. But over the years, we noticed that our maximum wait times, there's a lot of variation. It can be 40 minutes, 18 minutes, whatever. It's our goal has been to get that down to 20 minutes or less. That's our goal. And week before last, all three motor vehicle places where we do have Comatic to watch the times all came in less than 20 minutes. So, that's something we're just really happy about. Appraisal, what's going on appraisal? Looking at new construction, that's really keeping us busy, but also this is the time of year where we're just finishing our analysis of all of the sales. We had over 13,000 sales this last year, so we're analyzing those. Then we'll start applying the modifiers to the neighborhoods.
How does that compare with the previous year in sales, 13,000 this year?
Probably about, maybe 2,000 more. I think it's been about 11,000 in the past, so about 2,000 more appraisal. And then something else that I'm working on is a property tax summit for this either summer or fall. We don't know for sure. We want to, I'm working with AIC and Stephanie Witt from the university. University is going to be hosting this, and we want to make it in conjunction with the interim committee that the legislature is putting together. We're going to get some nationally recognized experts to come in and just really lay out what are the best practices with property taxes. We're going to have a history of property taxes in Idaho. This was done about 15 years ago. I was meeting with Randy Nelson from the Associated Tax Payers the other day, and it seems like there's just this 15-year cycle where property taxes really become front and center, and it takes up a lot of time to legislature. They will form an interim committee, and there'll be some type of action following that. So, I'm just, I'm really excited about that property tax summit. It's really a symposium, not a summit, but I think it's badly needed, and hopefully we'll give the legislature some guidance next year.
That'd be great. How are we doing on enrollment in the Circuit Breaker program? I know there's been a lot of coordinated effort, awareness.
Yes. We're up about 4%.
About 4%?
Yes, 4% on the Circuit Breaker, and of course, that's far from the goal. They're hoping that as we roll out more advertising in the coming weeks, that that will pick up. The real success is on the veterans with disability. That's up about 150% over last year. It's a new program. It's only, I think this is the second or the third year it's been in place. So, that's really, we're seeing a lot of growth there.
Are we getting information out to senior centers, and then the senior centers can distribute?
Madam Chair, yes, we are. We've got some palm cards that are being passed out, and we've done radio advertising.
Yep, okay. Keep up the efforts. Thank you so much.
So, that's what's going on in the Assessor's Office this week.
Thank you. All right, Treasurer's Office. It looks like Tim is here on behalf of Beth Mahner, Treasurer. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This past week, we, the subroll date passed. Due date was the 20th of February, and we pass that date now. So, after that, we went ahead and applied the any late charges, the 2% late charge to any outstanding parcels that were owed. So, we're preparing for the bills to be printed this week and go out. Of course, we did a lot more phone calls during that time, so we're kind of preparing for that, so we can explain to people what that bill is. A lot of people haven't ever seen that before. They haven't built a home. So, we help to educate them in that way. Also, this week, we'll be doing a distribution Thursday to the districts. Beyond that, we're keeping a close eye on economic conditions. Because of yields, you may have noticed that yields on bonds have been going down, and they've been, seem to be steadily going down. In fact, we hit an all-time low on the 30-year treasury note, 1.8%. It was either yesterday or two days ago. The two-year treasury is about 1.2, and since we're allowed to invest in treasuries and agencies, that kind of shows a benchmark of where those are at. And the two- and three-year bonds are typically a lot of the investments that the county looks at. So, the challenge for us going forward is what the yields are, the current yields are in the prevailing market, and as our bonds come due, you know, that's what we have available. So, we're watching that real closely. We have had some calls come in, as you know, in the past month, so we're looking at redeploying those. However, it's a challenging environment right now with the low yields, so just kind of keep an eye on that as well.
Thank you. Anything else from your office? All right, Beth, go for us. All right, let's move on to grants. It looks like we have grant number 2003B, and I'll need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the grant as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, Weed and Pest, and I will need a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve two notices of liens, two releases of liens from Weed and Pest as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, Expo Idaho. We have a lot of interim events going on out there.
Pigmy Goat Show.
Pigmy Goat Show, two of them.
Pigmy Goat Show times two.
Okay.
Two of them.
Put it on your calendar.
And a flea show.
And a flea market.
Oh, flea market.
A flea show. I think people would come out to see a flea show, a flea race.
I like it.
All right, let's go ahead and take up a motion for the interim events.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the eight interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, Parks and Waterways. I need a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve the One Barber Park Education and Event Center Agreement as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries. Next up, we have agreements. It looks like we have seven agreements, and we can take those all up at once with one motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve the seven agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys have it. Motion carries.
I love that this highlights the diversity of what we do here. We have the kids pedal tractor pull.
Yep.
And we're property tax reduction promotion and mobile system for work at the Sheriff's Office.
And boating safety.
There we go.
And software license.
A little bit of everything. All right, last but not least, procurement, again.
Yes, Madam Chair. Commissioners, we have an opening bid.
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners, uh, we have an opening of bid two zero zero three-three, the Ada County Jail Pod C Roof Replacement, two thousand twenty. And Alyssa has those up on the screen, and if you're ready, we'll go ahead and unseal them.
Sure. How large is that roof? What's the footprint? Any idea, the square footage?
Um, uh, this is a, uh, a section of the roof, and I don't know the particular square footage.
Is it an entire roof or just a section of it?
I think it's just a, a section of it.
Okay, good size, yeah, good size. Okay. Just to put it in perspective, right?
All right, Alyssa's got those up there, and so, uh, we just need the, uh, name of the bidder and the amount written to the record.
I can read it. Okay, we have, uh, Drycon Roofing, and that's, um, three hundred and twenty-four thousand. Then we have Nation's Roof at two hundred and seventy-five thousand three hundred, then we have Signature Roofing at one hundred and eighty-six thousand six hundred, and then Upson Company at three hundred and sixty thousand three, three hundred and seventy-six.
All right, perfect.
Okay. See, I can see.
Madam Chair, we'll need a little time to evaluate these bids, and, um, we'd like to request this table for award to the March third, two thousand twenty Open Business Meeting.
Okay. A motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, um, I move to table the award of bid two zero zero three-three, Ada County Jail Pod Roof, uh, Replacement, two thousand twenty, to, did you say?
March.
March third, two thousand twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye. Guys have it. Motion carries. Any further discussion? Carrying them, we'll go into recess. Thanks, everybody. Have a great day. Now it's your turn, Steve.
All right, so, you know, things are going good, continuing the transition. Uh, one of the things I wanted to highlight, uh, we've been looking at our deployment and trying to make sure we're getting the most bang for the buck, uh, in terms of the way we have our resources deployed, and we've, we've conducted an analysis, and, and we see that we can now make one of our twelve-hour cars. We have a, a car at Boise Station Ten, which is a, a front half car essentially. Um, and we're going to transition that car to a twenty-four-hour resource, uh, starting with our next shift bid. We've looked at controlling overtime, and we're eliminating some of kind of the administrative flex work that we do, and shifting that work into a field resource without any additional spending on our part makes sense. Um, and we're going to continue to kind of take those experimental, uh, approaches. We're, we're looking at the data leading up to there, mainly focused on response time and call volume in that area. Um, and then just analyze it as we go forward, and we've told our folks, hey, we're, we're going to try to be creative and just let you know what data we're going to be measuring, what matters, and if, if this doesn't get us where we need to go, we'll, we'll try something else. And that's one of the advantages we have. Every four months, we pick shifts, so we can kind of rebalance, uh, the way we have people deployed. And because of our co-staffing agreements with fire and with the hospitals, none of these require additional capital expenditures. They're just, um, you know, a, a personnel cost, and we already have all of those people in place. So I'm excited about that, and I think our people are excited because they've been saying we need to do this, and we've said the data just isn't quite there. And now we're saying, let's try it, uh, and see, we'll keep track of that overtime cost, we'll keep track of the response times and the call volumes, because, you know, that area of the county, as you all know, Meridian is growing so greatly, and we, we have two ambulances on at night there. Um, and we've done okay with that, but boy, does that make us nervous. Uh, and so putting, putting that resource there at Station Ten, which is right by Rick's house, Centennial High, really creates a, a buffer from those Meridian units getting pulled into kind of West Boise and keeps them located there, and then gives us seconding coverage to that area. So we're putting out monthly operational reports, which I'll start bringing to this meeting, and just seeing what those call volumes are, when we're busy, what our response times are. And in the past, we've, we've kept that kind of to ourselves and did sort of a every-so-after an evaluation of it, and now we just want to push it out publicly and evaluate it on a monthly basis, because we do have the ability to, to kind of, uh, you know, make sure that we're getting everything we can out of the, the dollars that the county's providing to us. So it's an exciting time, um, because it's a little different approach, and we do have a really well-designed system that has flexibility built in, and, and I'll keep you updated as we change those deployments and, and what the response time results are, being very mindful of, we do have this fixed personnel budget. But however we can transition resource to the field, uh, we want to continue to do going forward so that people have the best service.
They work.
Yeah, it's, it's exciting, and our, and our people are excited about just this little different approach. We have data. Let's, let's use the data. Let's, let's use the system as appropriate to, to get the best results and to keep our people's balance, because that call volume balance, as you all know, is very important in terms of a longevity piece. We can't burn them out, but we do need to be able to, to continue to make those response times. And last month, we were like at eighty-two percent for our Code Three responses, all call, which is pretty good for us. And so we're going to keep, keep that number. We want to continue to tick it up, and we think we can by making these, these small changes.
Well, as Eagle and Star continues to grow too, having, moving that additional vehicle there, they go right down the hill and over.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's such a balancing act, because, uh, as you know, I mean, Kuna in South Boise is just, and every, every time I drive around, I go, oh my goodness, that is a big subdivision. And so, yeah, just, but I think with that monthly reporting and then, and building that into the compass projections for growth and just really being visible every budget year with what our capital improvement plan and what our resource needs are, I think it'll keep us going in the right direction, and we continue to do other things to manage call volume, one of which is we just changed our response type to a certain kind of call. And so, when the police request EMS, uh, sometimes they mean EMS, sometimes they mean fire, sometimes they mean both. Um, but it turns out we get a lot of requests, um, for, hey, we just need paramedics Code Two. Um, and that means somebody has a, has something that they need to be evaluated, and what they mean is this person just needs to be checked out. The transport volume on those are like somewhere around twenty percent of those calls end up in the transport.
So you don't need a transport.
So you don't need EMS. What you need is somebody who can check the person out. And so we've changed the way CAD is dispatching so that, uh, at a much more frequent level, they will get the closest resource, which in a lot of cases ends up being fire, and if our analysis holds true, we think we can pull a thousand.
Isn't fire awfully expensive, because oftentimes they take their big trucks?
They do take their big trucks, and so it's a, it's a mix, um, but they're, uh, they're available, and, and a lot of that stuff is fixed cost.
And then you aren't putting the, you know, EMS folks out of service to transport somebody else who is having the cardiac arrest.
Yeah, and so it's, but we do this in, in the access, you know, it's, everybody's at the table saying, yeah, this decision makes sense. But if we can eliminate, and, and we think this eliminates a thousand ambulance calls, um, then we have this real giant response time gain without adding resource to the system. And so there is.
But I thought that then that was being transferred over to fire.
It'll go to fire.
Yeah, so it's still in the system. I consider this.
It's still in, yeah, it's still in the system.
So we don't then need to add more transport vehicles.
Correct. So, so we have, they still are watching their response times and making sure they're meeting theirs, and we're, so it, it's a, it is, it does sound a little uncoordinated the way I described it, but, um, and when it is, uh, serious PD call, hey, we need ambulance and fire, or we need somebody here lights and sirens, then it continues to be the same response. Um, and so they'll watch their, you know, their unit volume. We'll watch our unit volume and just make sure that the dollars that are invested in the system are being used to achieve the best response times for, for the citizens. But yeah, I do, we do keep those concerns at the top of mind, and they are doing things to change how they're doing it. They're going to put a squad, uh, at Station Five. A squad is two people in a truck.
That's right.
Because why do they need to send their engine?
Big red.
And so we're, we're very hopeful, um, because Engine Five is exactly where we get the most PD requests, because they're, they're right in the middle of downtown, and so if that, if that squad model is successful in their minds, then they may deploy additional squads, and now you have a, a very affordable resource, uh, you know, basically a pickup truck that they can then respond to people to that location. And so there's a lot of efficiencies with this access model, and I, this is kind of part of, you know, really seeing the deployment piece pay off, because ultimately, that is the one thing that's going to drive cost savings due to this collaboration, so.
Thank you. I have a couple additional items I'd like to do last week, and that is an interesting, uh, consortium that's been up and running for a number of years now, but essentially they are able to pull in health data from Al's, Luke's, other providers, to be able to, um, really get a holistic picture of a patient so that you're not having to call and get paper charts, et cetera. And so we sort of restarted the conversation about what would it look like for a number of our different components to be a part of that data exchange, both for a service-level delivery for, for Sees crew, um, so that they actually have a history when they're picking somebody up. Um, I'm particularly interested, not only that, but also for us, um, I think it'll be helpful. Um, but just wanted to let you know, we had that meeting last week, and you're going to get started with them, so.
Yeah, I'm, I have a meeting with Prudence to kind of go forward and sort of, they.
Just a local company?
There, it's a, it's a state, uh, and I, I think the funding is private-oriented, but it's a state.
Data exchange.
Data exchange.
It's a five oh one C three, but it's blessed by the state, so it's almost quasi-governmental.
Yeah, and we've had chats in the past, but restart those conversations, and we're kind of excited about it. Ultimately, people aren't the best, uh, historians when it comes to their own health history. And so having the ability for our providers to pull up actual medical records and really get a sense of how this acute event is fitting in with their chronic care will be a huge benefit to us.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So, and then one more piece. So on Friday, um, I had my, uh, quarterly Central District Health, uh, meeting, which, you know, we all should have received that coronavirus update, so that's number one. Uh, they are tracking, very interesting, so they are, you know, personally calling people who have been flagged, um, to have, having traveled to China, et cetera, et cetera, and that's another topic. But one of my fellow board members, um, is Commissioner Sturm from Boise County, um, who happens to be a paramedic as well, because, you know, they do everything up there.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and he shared that, uh, Avamoore just was up there for a community meeting and said, had made some representations that, um, Ada County paramedics were going to be doing, um, EMS on the Boise County side. So I guess I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, and so he asked me, have we signed a contract? We, I said, we have, I haven't heard boo about that. So we'll just need to be sure that we are in close communication about what's going on, um, as that proceeds forward.
When's our coordinated meeting, uh, coordinated growth meeting with Eagle?
March fifth.
March fifth, okay. Are you going to be there?
Yes, yeah, I got them all on my calendar.
Those questions might come up.
Yeah, and, you know, current state, we do, uh, oftentimes rendezvous with Horseshoe Bend ambulance, um, at the county line. They've asked us to move the county line, uh, hey, could you rendezvous with us in Horseshoe Bend? No.
Yeah.
Uh, could you rendezvous with, with us at the top of the hill?
Yeah.
You know, and so it's, but we, we want to be as helpful a resource to them as possible, but we are mindful that, uh, if we do have an out-of-county response, our battalion chief has to approve it, and that has to go through one of the deputy chiefs, and so, uh, we, we're looking forward to the opportunity to have it, an actual agreement with them, especially if that Avamoore boundary shifts. But in the meantime, we'll continue our practice of, we're good partners, but we have a priority, and that's the citizens of Ada County.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and go into recesses. We've got to get upstairs for the meeting.
Oh, yeah, I will have fun.